Good morning, everybody. Good morning, council. Good morning. We have a full gallery. That's really nice to see. And so, welcome. Before we get started on this meeting of February 7, 2023, our Committee of the Whole for the month of February, we would like to acknowledge we are meeting here today in Casputwick, one of the seven districts of Migmoggi, homeland of the Migmog people. We acknowledge the treaties of peace and friendship, and we thank the Migmog people for their generosity in sharing their homeland with us. We are all treaty people. And if I could have a motion to approve the agenda, please, Council Elliot, and seconded by Counselor Butler. There is a slight change to the order of the of the agenda. Council is going to go in camera at 10:30. We will take a a comfort break at 10 to 11, and then we will come back in camera. We have some people coming to join us at 11, and we'll stay in camera until lunch. And then after lunch, we will come back and be an open session for the operations budget, which is yay, so much fun. So with that, with that change to the order, all those in favor of approving the agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's passed. We have three minutes to be approved. The first one, if I could have a mover for Committee of the Whole minutes of January 10, 2023, Deputy Mayor.
I move that the minutes of Committee of the Whole meeting for January 10, 2023 be approved and circulated.
And a second or please, Counselor Ingham, to on the record, any errors or omissions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes as provided, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Could I have a mover for Committee of the Whole in-camera minutes of January 10, 2023, Counselor Butler?
I move that the minutes of Committee of the Whole in-camera meeting of January 10, 2023 be approved as circulated.
Thank you. And a second or please, Counsel Elliot, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, those are passed. And the mover for Special Budget Committee of the Whole minutes of January 19, 2023. Counselor McKay, would you like to read that?
I would move that the minutes of the Special Budget Committee of the Whole meeting of January 19, 2023 meeting be approved as circulated.
Thank you. And a second or please. Counselor Ingham, are any errors or omissions? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Those are passed. And before we get to our presentation, I would like to introduce to council and to those in the gallery, new staff, Chris Cheeseman is our engineering tech. Welcome, Chris. Great to have you. And Alex or Chris, exactly what does the engineering tech do?
I'll come up to the microphone.
Thank you.
And address council. Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing us a couple minutes to do this quick intro. I had the distinct pleasure of hiring Chris when I was working at Able Engineering. Over the course of about a year and a half, I had got to do work with him and train him and feel like I know him well. I know his capabilities, and I was happy that he applied for the opening. And yeah, he started with us on Monday last week, so. Thank you for letting me introduce him. I am going to let him go so he doesn't sit here for a little bit.
We're going to have so much fun.
He keeps his exact job description and I get into the. I'm slowly starting to pass some.
He says aside.
I don't want to set the bar too high to scare my wages.
Well, welcome, Chris. We're very glad that you that you chose to be with us and have a good day. All right. All right, we have a we have a presentation from the Wolfville Children's Center. They just let you introduce yourselves, and I think we have some other members of your team in the in the gallery. I met Kelly last summer. I think the weather was warm anyways. It was at an event at the Children's Center. And that was that was lovely meeting, and we could ask you to keep your presentation to about 10 minutes. And then if members of council have any questions for you, we'll ask you to stay just to see that. Okay, thank you. You may take it away.
Good morning. I'm Kelly Holloman. I'm the Executive Director at the Wolfville Children's Center, and with me today is Tanya Saret, our Board Chair, and Board Members John Smith and Robin McBain. Can I just click? Okay, thank you. Just a little background about us. Wolfville Children's Center is a nonprofit charity. We opened in 1972 as a as a parent cooperative on Acadia campus, and we've been serving the Wolfville community with childcare for over 50 years. And that's where we met Mayor Donovan this summer, was at our 50th anniversary. And our philosophy is that every child is in child quality care. We have childcare for children ages 18 months to 12 years. We have about 10 full-time and three part-time staff. We partner with Acadia with the some of the new programs. We've been working with them in community development, environmental studies. So we have actually a graduate student coming to do their thesis with us this semester. We can have opportunities for students to train with us through NSCC and the Mount. And we provide part-time and summertime employment for local students as well. And we've been partnering with the Larch Community for over 20 years to provide vocational opportunities. Our families of the Wolfville Children's Center and the after-school program, about 87% of them work in the town of Wolfville. About 53% of them work or live in the town of Wolfville, and about 43% live outside of Wolfville, some as far as New Ross. We have a lower number this year as far as students go. This is, we only have about 4% that are students at the moment. Our waitlists historically are very high, averaging at least 20 at a time. Currently, actually, as of today, there are 56 on the waitlist. But that was just for the this year. Our waitlists are a little higher on the toddler end. We have, we've seen a bit of a shift with the pre-primary program and more preschoolers moving on. We have a waitlist into 2024. We've had families reach out while they're still pregnant. We've had people reach out who aren't pregnant yet, looking for a space. And currently, we have no space in either the center or the the after-school program. So we're waitlisted for the after-school program. And we're actually waitlisted right into 2024, 2025. We've already started waitlist for families for that program as well. And we only can take 21 children. So you know, that is, that's hard now. We have younger children. They're not moving out as quickly. We we closed the program. The children come to us for a summer program, which brings us down to only 12 spaces that we can offer for care in the summer. Our after-school program is also housed at the old subbuilding at Acadia. The Federal Childcare Agreement was signed in July of 2021, and some of the highlights of that agreement would be the increasing wages for staff, but also the 50% reduction in fees for families, which is incredible. Another big promise has been to increase the centers or increased spaces by 9,500. They've been able to actualize as of December 2022, they've been able to actualize 1,100 spaces. And there is funding around that for expansion, and they're relooking at how that will be distributed going into the new year. We performed a or we had an accessibility audit done in July of 2022. There was an immediate need identified for us on our playground. And so we felt not only did we need to look at what our playground needs are, but what do we need to do to make our building accessible? Houdini Design completed that in July, and they identified many areas of concern. And obviously, our our building was built in the 1970s, and it wasn't meant as a childcare center. So there was many things that needed to be considered for various reasons. Their main recommendation was, in order to achieve the accessibility that we would like to see in that building, would be many, many upgrades. And feasibility-wise, it would be better to look at looking at a new building as opposed to trying to renovate the current building we had, based on the age of the building and the needs of or the construction and that type of thing. Some of the needs and challenges that we're facing at the moment is obviously our increased waitlists, both in both the after-school and the center. We can only offer care to the students of Wolfville School as well. We have to relocate. We've been given our notice. We are in an agreement, but we know that the the building we're currently in is also going to be renovated. And both the center and the after-school program have had to relocate. The centers had to relocate three times in its history until we landed in our current location, which is in on Earnst Cliff Avenue. And then we also have the after-school program having moved about seven times. And it always has to do with just the situation that we're in, the agreement that we have for rental and that sort of thing. And again, the building is aging. We have minimal space to bring in extra children in the summertime, which would be nice to be able to offer that for our after-school families for sure. If we were to look at a new build, we're limited to the current footprint that we're on, and we would need to look at expanding into more land. The challenge has always been to find an appropriate location. When we were made aware of needing to look at a new location and after our lease would end, we started that this summer, and and it's been happening for all the years when we've had to move. And the challenge is finding a space, finding a space that's appropriate for our licensing needs, having an a playground accessible to our our children. I mean, even our spot at Acadia, we get creative because obviously it's a university, not a childcare center. So we do our best to find our green spaces for them. But we would also be willing, if we were able to expand, we would expand in our spaces too, to meet the needs of the growing populations. This is our current footprint in red. This is our center, our playground area and our parking area, which we share with the EKM. The land behind us is obviously where the playground currently is for the town and an area that we use quite a bit, which we call the quiet park. When we talked with Houdini about the potential of what would that look like if we were to move to a new center? Lisa came back with a a quick drawing. This, of course, is very early on. There hasn't been deep conversations with all the necessary partners, such as licensing. But this was a vision that she had come up with for us, where we would take the space and make it in a pavilion style. So each pavilion would have its own purpose. So there would be an area for our classroom spaces. There would be an area for our after-school spaces. There would be a space we could have as a movement area for children. We could have a greenhouse area. And and then the center of the pavilion would be our licensed requirements for our playground, which has to be fenced in, obviously. So it would just have that natural ability to be that way with the buildings. And this is just an example at the bottom of what a pavilion style might look like. So this would be kind of our vision. If we could create something, we would move the pavilion-style buildings to the the area behind us. Then we would take the space that the center currently sits on and create a fully accessible playground space that would be available to the community. We recognize that the area we are in is an ideal situation for us as a childcare center. We are so accessible to so many things just by the very nature of the location we are in. And we can access things like the Acadia Gardens. We can go down to Elderkin's Farm Market. We can walk to the library. It's all very accessible to us. It's just the land that we don't have at this moment. But this would be our, this would be our vision, is to be able to do it in such a way similar to what the Wolfville School had done, where we would create a building, stay where we are, and then and then move and then tear down the building eventually to create this outdoor play space. And then there would be no interruption of care to families. Childcare looks a lot different than it did even when I started, and the ability to to realize that we haven't made our centers accessible is really an important, an important lens to have on when we move forward with anything, even if even what we're doing for low-hanging fruit in our center currently. We would like to make our our center fully accessible. We would like to see it as sustainable and environmentally conscious. We would like to address food insecurity, which is a major issue as our costs continue to grow. And we would also like to work on having natural play spaces for the children. We know that the the town's hope is to bloom and grow. And so with that, there would be a demand for care. And so our goal would be to create a center that would be accessible. It would have, our goal would be to have a Rick Hansen certified center. We would also look at having a certification in sustainability. We would, we would want to continue our can our commitment to community partnerships with Acadia, NSCC, the Wolfville Business Development Corporation, all those, all those major important people. And and then we would also want to reach out to the indigenous community, to the elders and knowledge keepers where we are in the land of Migmoggi, and that that needs to be an important lens that comes with that as well. And some of the design that Lisa has looked at is with that intention of some of the playground spaces, both in our center and in the playground that would be extended for the community to use. And we live and we work in a internationally, you know, we're in, we're in a university town, so it has that international flair as it is. And we also have a multicultural staff, which we're very proud of. So all of those lenses would be very much a part of the conversations going forward. We're obviously not investment ready until we have a plan in place. And in order to to build, we need to look at land. Our board has committed to a capital campaign, should that be the move that we go forward with, and find means of fundraising. We would like the consideration for the Wolfville Children's Center to extend into the town land that is adjacent to our facility. The public space and the playground would be incorporated into this project. So that space that is currently being used as a as a quiet park, we would want to maintain as an open area for the community to still access. And we would understand that obviously the the decisions wouldn't be made today, that further conversation would necess would be happening. So we would certainly welcome any conversation going forward, and that we would continue to support the Wolfville community by providing childcare into the future. Any questions or comments?
Yes. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that presentation. I have a lot of fond memories with my children having gone there a long time ago. So this is a very interesting to see the directions that you're moving in. I'm just curious about timelines. What your timeline is in terms of this project? And also, you mentioned the the rentals. So you're renting the property at the moment?
The Earnst Cliff property we own. It's the it's the site at Acadia that we're in a rental agreement with.
Okay, because I was confused about that. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ingham. Thank you for the presentation. I'm just wondering, I do applaud you for for trying to be the first accessible daycare in the province. And I am surprised there's only two other others in Canada, as noticed noted in British Columbia. Currently, since since you aren't accessible, does that limit you for children that need that have special like neat mobility needs for to be coming in the center?
Well, it's it's even bigger than just the children that we're being accessible to, it would be to our staff and to our family community. So at the at the moment, we don't have an accessible way to to get to the center, even from our parking area. We and that's sort of what sparked the conversation. We have an individual in our in our center currently that the center itself isn't really accessible for. And that's what sort of sparked this. So it isn't even just for the children. It would also be if you had a if you had a parent, you know, with with an accessibility issue, to be able to bring your children and be able to access the building to your children is is a big important piece of that as well. So I think it makes me think of, as we would say back in the day, when I was working with the school board, the school Annapolis, Annapolis East was the school to go to if you were a child, if you had a child with autism. You wanted your children to go to Annapolis East because they had everything in place to meet the needs of children with autism. So I feel it's the same. I think we're in a unique situation with our current building because we are on the level, but we are not accessible from certain areas to reach our building safely. So there is already limits just within what we're already currently operating with.
Yeah, thanks for expanding on that. That's really important. That my second question would be, and maybe I missed it. How many children, extra children, do you figure that would be added to the the Children's Center with all the renovations?
It would depend on, we'd have to look at the build, but we would definitely look to increase at least probably another classroom for our multi-age center. And we could expand on the be able, by being able to have our after-school program, we could expand on the number of children that we could offer after-school care to as well. So that would all has to do with, we'd have to reach out to licensing as to what they would license us for, but we would definitely look to increase at least probably by 20 spaces, if not more.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Palmetier, that was your question? Counselor Elliot.
Brilliant. Thanks very much, Kelly. This is an exciting, exciting presentation and plan, and I'm just wondering if it's big enough.
Well, again, this was Lisa's early, early drawing. So I mean, it would been and and, you know, as we in our conversation, she was talking blue sky, or as Julie would say, blue ocean, in the sense that she wanted to get something that we could bring forward to you. And and it would, it would be with more more conversations about what our needs were. So maybe we don't have such a big movement space, but we have a smaller movement space, and that'd be another space to add to the classroom space.
Okay, sure. The other thing I was just going to mention, I think that building goes back to the 50s. Okay, I might be wrong. It was the Fundamental Health Center for decades. So the the build is older than than 70s.
I was just going by the blueprints that we have.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So anyway, I wish you all the luck in the world. Thank you.
Counselor McKay or Counselor Butler, any comments, questions?
Kelly, thank you. I had the pleasure of sitting down with you last week when I was gallivanting around town, had a nice long conversation. There's a lot of excitement in that building, and although I didn't get to see them, she kept those from me. It's wonderful. I look forward to seeing what's next. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Erin has just whispered in my ear. So are we, would you like us to ask for a staff report, or staff are going to bring a staff report?
If it's the wish of council to explore this further, staff will bring a report back.
Do we need a motion to that?
You can pass a motion.
Would somebody like to move that we would like council, staff to bring back a staff report? Okay, Counselor McKay and Counselor Palmetier have moved that, and I hope Laura, you have got some words for that. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. All right. Thank you so much, Kelly, and the rest of your team. Lovely to see you. You're welcome to stay all day, but you may have other things to do. Do we have anybody online for public input? Do we have anyone in the gallery for public input? We don't. And I just confirm, we don't have anybody online for public input. So we'll go directly to committee reports. And as I go through these, I'll just ask the author of these reports if there's anything to add. So Counselor Ingham, is there anything to add to your report on accessibility?
No, I submitted.
Submitted. Thank you. Counselor Butler, audit, anything to add?
As submitted.
Submitted. PAC, Deputy Mayor?
No.
Town and Gown, nothing else, and Police Services Review Committee? As submitted. All right, that brings us quickly to the CAO report.
Yes, so I I won't spend a lot of time because it has all the details. But I did want to note that we were successful in bringing in an IT manager to join our team. So David Hopkins will be joining us starting February 20. And he comes from the county of Annapolis, comes with some fairly extensive municipal and private sector experience in the IT field. So we're really excited. I think probably no one more excited than Mike McLean to have. So, yeah, so he'll be joining us, and we will bring him in front of council to meet everybody once he starts. And yeah, everything else is contained in the reports. If you have any specific questions, I think a lot we'll get to today as we talk through the ops plan and and other items in the agenda. So as submitted, unless there's any questions.
Are there any questions of the CAO on that report? See any, just go through to see if I have made a note to myself. I don't seem to have. All right. So we have two items that came as a request for addition to the to the agenda. We're not going to discuss these here today, but what we will do is I will ask each submitter, the first one is mine. The second one is Counsel Elliot, to just do a very brief overview of what you are requesting, and then our discussion. You're looking at me like I didn't do something. Oh, we are discussing it. Oh, okay. All right. But we may just, the discussion may be direction. That's what I was going to say. So we will, so I will just go into the first one. This, what I am asking for council to ask staff is to develop basically an SOP. There was some discussion, as you recall, a month or so ago, when we were appointing members to various committees as to what is the role of community, community members to a committee? Is it to bring a certain skill set? And I'm going to preface this by saying, obviously, we would like to have both. But is it intent, is the intention to? But is it intent, is the intention to bring a certain specific skill set to support staff? Or to support council because it's a skill set we don't have? Or do we view these as, as perhaps stepping stones onto council or somebody who just wants to get involved in a committee? A, a committee of council but may or may not want to use this as a stepping stone to see if they would like to be a member of council. It's a way to get involved in their community, maybe without taking the, the, the final jump or the final bite. So there was some confusion on that. And I think there may be confusion in the community. I think it's important for us to understand why we put people on a, on these committees of council. Secondly, I think it's important that we provide some mentoring or some direction. And I did look at our committee's policy and I did note that, and I think it's through the clerk, and I'm not sure over the past number of years, given the disruption in our life from COVID and the opportunity to provide training, I'm not sure that that has happened. I don't remember it happening actually for me when I became a committee member. So maybe it postdates all those many, many years ago. But I, I think as people come on to a committee, it's also important for someone, whether it's the staff person or the, the mayor or the deputy mayor or somebody from council or the counselors who are on a committee to provide some mentoring to those people so they know what their role is. I know when I chaired PAC, I invited all three community people to have coffee and talk about their role. And, and two out of the three did take me up on that. And I, reflecting on that experience, I know that there were, there was some I don't know if it was confusion, but a little bit of anxiety on the part of community people. Suddenly, you're sitting around this auspicious table with people who seem to know what they're doing, even if we don't always, all the time. And I, I think there's a shyness sometimes that, that keeps people from speaking up as much as, as maybe they would after, after some time. So long and short of it, I was asking staff to bring back a standard operating procedure that would clarify why we have community people on our committees and also a process, whether it is through the, the clerk to, to do some training or whether it also, and whether it may fall to the chair of the committee to help mentor or, or the staff person involved mentor that community person. So that was my ask. And I guess our question is your comments, but also do we want to give staff direction to come back with a, with us operating procedures on that? Counselor McKay?
Questions maybe? I, I think having some guidelines for us is probably a good thing and what we'd like to have on certain committees. I may not, we may not always get that depending on who want, in the community, who wants to do what. But I think those are certainly helpful. I know we don't approve an SOP, but coming back to us because we would be the people either learning or teaching, depending on which where we were, that would be great. And is it just then, so happy to see something like that. And is it just about community members or was it also about the organization of it? So I mean, we, sometimes we might be counselors as new, we might be new to it. We may not, you may need the education as much as the community member. So having staff come in and, you know, do a full orientation for, for everyone. And then, you know, as time goes on, we can pass that knowledge on, but we might be getting it for the first time. So that as well. And then I wondered about, so is it? Because then there was a discussion about alternates. So is this the same discussion or different discussion?
This could be the same. I, I, I had already written this by the time we had the discussion of alternates. But I, I think, I think yes, we could add that in our direction to staff that we and the, for those people in the audience. And maybe on council because this came as a result of a PAC discussion and perhaps of perhaps all committees are not of this ilk, but PAC is very, very technical. And it takes a, there's a, there are a lot of balls in the air when we're dealing with planning things and, and legislation that governs us. And so the discussion was, should, we do need a vice chair on the PAC, should that be member of council who would have the partly this, the background that Counselor McKay talks about? Or is it okay for it to be a community person? And that was, we don't have an answer to that, but I would say that we could add that in here because it was important.
Yeah. So I would like to see the alternate discussion go back into that SOP as well. I always feel like unless a committee member really wants to chair, I like having them as a member because they get to speak more often and they're there to give us that feedback and that input. So I really like them at the table to, to give us that as opposed to sitting just, not just cheering. But, you know, keeping the, the conduct of everyone going. So that would be great. And I also wondered as I did this, could we put in the SOP? I know it's on the town calendar, but can we also get invitations to all of them? I think every committee should have an offer. And I should say that first. And I think everyone should be invited to every meeting, even though it's not mandatory. So it's in our count, it's like, I'm not on PAC, but if it was in my calendar as you can show up if you wish, then everyone could have it. And it's easy if someone asks us to, what, where can they be? So sort of a mesh of all, of everything to do with committees, but if it could come back in some.
And I do remember that happening at one time. And I remember getting, it was a Remo meeting and I got an invitation, not realizing that all of council got that. And I thought, so I just came, but I wasn't on the committee. I didn't know why I'd been invited, but it was, it was that, that's a good idea.
So there could be mandatory and then just.
Yep, optional. And, and those optional would sit in the gallery whereas the committee sits. Counselor Ingham.
Yes, I do agree with all of those, as I counsel McKay. Also, is there something we can put in there? Maybe it was, I'm just throwing it out there. When we decide on choosing committee members, is there, I mean, say somebody was on the committee and they're re-offering, but somebody else comes on with high expertise, you know, like is there something in there to say, you know, you were on this committee, but somebody, you know? I don't know, like I'm just asking the question because sometimes it's difficult. We get so many good applicants. And, you know, they might add a different perspective, you know, moving forward, you know, then, yeah. So how can we just?
I think we've said that two terms and then you're, you have to take a term off.
Two terms, I know. But what if after the, the first term, you're like, oh geez, this person.
Okay, so to respond, so we had that, we didn't used to have that. And I remember a situation with a two, two prominent people on a PAC committee that, and they may have spent more than two terms, but we didn't have that policy. And we took them off for somebody. And, and I think to this day, one of these people has got kind of a nose out of joint. So I, I think unless the person is just not performing, I don't know, it feels kind of not fair if you, you know, because there's always something, there's always someone better. I don't know, that would be something staff could explore.
Something, something I think that we could explore on that, just to make it more concrete for, for us to, to choose and make sure we have the right, you know, form, you know, nation. I think we can do that. We, because we did have a couple of committee members this year that would have come back for a second term and then were moved to another committee. So you're not locked into having to take someone back for a second term. And maybe there's some language that we can say that's very clear. You're welcome to apply for a second term, but it doesn't necessarily guarantee that you'll be back. And some of these, through this discussion, some of it might be an SOP, some of it might be a policy change, some of it might be embedded right in the terms of reference, which are part of the policy. Laura had gone through and she's got some housekeeping stuff she wanted to bring back anyway. The alternate discussion and the chair, like the vice chair should probably part of the policy. So if the direction can be broad that we bring back the policy and or SOP as appropriate, because we may be able to get it all into the policy. So it's, it's clear.
Anybody, any, so what we need is somebody to, a motion to direct staff. Somebody would do that. Counselor McKay?
I would like to move forward motion from committee of the whole to council that staff look at the committees of council policy and potential SOP in regards to the agenda item February seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Can you second her?
Oh, I will second it.
Deputy Mayor, yes. Are there any comments or questions, Deputy Mayor?
I do have a question only that it applies to committees of council. Do we want to extend that to committees that aren't of council but the council? In, in terms of the SOP, the orient, like I think there are pieces that would be helpful. For example, if somebody's on WBDC, that's not a committee of council, but we are engaged. So that if somebody goes, i- if we're asked to represent council on that, that there's a process for orientation as well on that.
Why don't we say committees where counselors appoint, are appointed or appoint? Okay, with that, which would be, which would be committees of council would be those committees where one of you sit on that. So with that, yeah, Erin?
Just on that and just a recognition that the committees that are external to us that we don't have control over will likely need to do their own orientation programs as well to do justice for someone new coming on to the committee. I think it's fair to have a representative sit down with staff to kind of say from our perspective, here's some of the key things you need to know. But those organizations need to own that. Where our own committees, we have full control. So I just wanted to.
Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. So that direction is given. And Counselor Elliott? You're on deck.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to this. And comes from Roger Tatlock, but I'm going to say a few words and then hopefully he can say a few words. My interest in this is, is long-term, but it was kind of activated by the province of Prince Edward Island opting to ask the federal government around basic income, living wage, beyond living wage, something that is practically good for food security, for rent, for all the things that people have to pay for. Basic wage rather than little pockets of help seems like a good notion. And then in June last year, the city of Halifax wrote to the federal government in favor of the concept. And as I understand it from Roger and talking to a very, a very good activist in Halifax, Elizabeth K. Rainingbird, municipalities Yarmouth, Annapolis Royal, Lunenburg, Amherst and Cumberland County are all in the process of examining this notion of asking for a basic income. Last November, I took part in an online Zoom conference, which was Atlantic wide. And the, the stories are really quite compelling. And so I would just, just ask that council consider simply writing a letter or two, province, feds. There are models out there and we even have an advocate in the School of Nutrition at Acadia who could help with this if we want to look at it further. But that's my ask and.
Actually, no, we do not have members of the public speak here. We did all get a letter from, from Roger. And if Roger is still here for public input at the end of the meeting this afternoon, he could speak, but we don't, we don't have people speaking at council. But I will open that up for questions or comments. Counselor McKay?
The first time I think I heard of this was when Counsel Elliot and I went in Berwick. Yeah, many of those are a while ago now. Yeah. And so it was an interesting, my first real in-depth look at it. And from then I would say it's grown. I think it's an interesting concept, aside from costs and all those things from the federal point of view. Which I can't disambiguate, but the, the idea of it for me, I think it's the pockets. It's, you have to look for rent subsidies, food subsidies, food banks. You go, we look at tax breaks here. We like, everybody's like, who's having a hard time has, has to search out for help. And I feel like that's, that's detrimental. And I think the socioeconomic changes for them would be astronomical, the outcomes for health. Everything would be so much different if someone just had the basics to live. So I would be happy to support this if it was the wish of council.
Deputy Mayor and then Counselor Ingham.
I, I would agree with those positions that have been presented so far. I think in addition to the, the difficulty that the individuals needing assistance face in making their way through this whole kind of myriad and complex system of trying to get all those pieces together. I think there's also a cost on the other side, on the administrative side. When you think of how many agencies we need, how many, how much bureaucracy we have in place to sustain all those various paths and streams of support that exist that I think could be hugely streamlined and reduced so that we're not only reducing the number of people or maybe even a limited number of people that an individual has probing into their life and helping them manage their life and, you know, examining all that. But we certainly reduce costs and confusion at the other end. And so I think that there is a huge benefit, not just to the individual, but to our whole structure, social structures in general. So I think this is something that we should definitely do what we can to, to support, looking at this and advancing this further.
Counselor Ingham.
Yeah, thank you, Roger, for all the information you sent. I went through it and I will say that I still have a lot to learn. So there's a lot to learn. But I do like the concept of the overall, the design that everybody deserves to have the necessities. Everybody deserves to have a roof over their head. Everybody deserves to have food on the table, clothes, et cetera. So that concept I, I'm in favor of. So I'm in favor of writing a letter and see, see what we can do as the town of Wolfville moving forward.
The comments? I have a different view of this. I had a chance to talk to Mayor Matart and asked him if he would write a letter. And his answer was no. And his answer was the same concerns that I have there. As you've all mentioned, there are just so many things I don't know. And I, as mayor, I often get asked to write a letter in support. And in this situation, I am, of, of course, support the, the sense that people have a living wage. That's, that's not a question. But what does that mean? What are the implications of that to our businesses? What are the implications to all the other organizations? What's the, what is the cost of that? Counselor Elliott, you said, you mentioned a number of municipalities who were studying this as opposed to just writing a letter. I would, is it your understanding that they are actually studying those questions that I have and that we could get access to that?
I know that Yarmouth, for example, has asked somebody like Jennifer Brady from Acadia to come and speak to them with more information than I can provide. Okay. So that's, as I understand it, that's how they're studying it.
Okay. So I will throw out to, I, I don't feel comfortable. If, and, and usually it falls to me to write a letter. I don't feel comfortable because I just don't have enough information other than the kind of general goodwill that I hear around this table and that, that I certainly feel. So council, I'm wondering, what is the step before the letter? That would allow us, allow me, if I'm the one that's writing this letter, to feel that I know what the implications are.
Um, okay. Thanks, Mayor Donovan. I do appreciate your honesty and, and obviously if you're going to be writing the letter, you need to be comfortable and we all need to be comfortable. As I, as I said before, reading through it, it's very complex. So it's not, there's not an easy solution. I, I think everybody around the table wants to try to find a solution. I think we're in agreeance with that. But as Counselor Elliott said, maybe we could have somebody come in to speak to council and maybe offer some more information. I mean, it, it is you know, a complex, how, how do we, it's not like the municipality is going to solve the problem on how we're going to mandate this, this program or anything like that. I think we can all agree that, that it is an issue and, and the pandemic has made it worse. And, you know, just with the cold snap that we had, you know, we were concerned about people coming in from the cold. So I think we all have good intentions. So maybe we could get somebody to come in to speak. So we have some more information. I, I don't feel, if you're not comfortable, then I, I wouldn't support that.
Well, it's, it's not that I'm, I want to make it very clear. I am very, I do strongly support that people have a living wage. I mean, that, that, why wouldn't we? But I don't know. But I don't know what the implications are. So for example, we know our, we know our. Food and beverage business has been struggling to get employees. Would this make it easier for them or would it make it harder for them? I don't know the implication. So I'd like to hear somebody from the business community talk about what that means. I heard somebody the other day. Say that a living wage in Nova Scotia is $21 an hour and the province has just put it up to 15. In October and then it's going up well and then it's going up again in October. So we are. Seven, six, seven dollars away from a living wage. What are the implications of that? And I I do struggle, we will struggle hard this afternoon with our taxpayers' ability to accommodate the things that that they, this town provides. So I'm very sensitive that there's not, that there are many sides to this and. Would like to find a solution and I in my mind don't have it right now because I just don't know enough. So I'm wondering. If we could provide direction to, I guess councillor Elliot maybe and and others who are interested to. To find some people on the business side, on the. On the, you mentioned someone in Yarmouth. Who would come and do presentations that we could have a more fulsome discussion of this before we. It's easy to write a letter to the federal government and say, we support this. That is really easy, but I don't know. There are always implications and I don't know what those are and whether they would end up undermining the goodwill that we have.
I would be happy to try and bring some help in.
We'll come back to that because I will have asked someone to move this.
Um, yes, I just wanted to. To talk about some of the terminology because I I do think and it's just part of what we would need to explore. I think there's a difference between a universal basic income and minimum wage. I mean, those are two in my mind, completely separate issues. So what the minimum wage is the minimum wage, that's that's. And sometimes now people are talking about living wage. To try to raise the minimum wage bar, which I think is an important discussion to have. We need to. Realize how much money people nowadays really need to to live. That is, in my mind, a very different discussion from basic, universal basic income. To me, the universal basic income really will entail a large restructuring. Of how government agencies, government departments provide support to individuals. So I don't see those two things. Obviously, we're talking about people's ability to live and have all their basic needs covered. But the source, I guess, and is it would be different in my mind, we're not, I don't see this as. Necessarily affecting the business community because we're not talking about. Raising the minimum wage in this, it could have effect maybe. But I think when we look at all the various paths, as we've talked about, where people need to buy to get assistance for their rent. They need to get assistance for their food, for their children, for all of those things. Those are. Number of different sources that people have to access in order to gather the money that they need to live a basic life. So I see this as being a very big challenge to. Federal and provincial governments because it would require them to restructure. A lot of the mechanisms and also the volunteer organization possibly, but to restructure those. Mechanisms that we have to provide that support or that catch. So I I do think we need to. Keep tho- keep those things distinct in our minds as we advance this discussion. So what I see is asking the provincial or federal government is that they take a very serious look. At all of these mechanisms that require somebody to juggle. A whole bunch of different sources and have a whole bunch of different people in their lives. Trying to just make ends meet on a monthly, on a monthly basis. So. Anyway, I I'd be happy to provide whatever support I could. In this, again, I'm learning a lot about this. I I I think it's something that I, I think we, it's important for us to know more. And I think we we do have a lot of questions. That's that's not a.
Great. Thank you. You you added even more comments and questions of things that that. Which was my kind of gut feeling that this is complicated and I don't really know what all complications are. Councillor Ingham.
Um, that was well said, Isabel. I I just wanted to reiterate that just because you have a living wage, there's, there's so many people out there that are. Single parents that are working, you know, jobs at minimum wage but still can't make it. So. I'm not the person that decides who would be on this program and who wouldn't. I will say that I am committed to learning some more. So I I would be happy to. To sit on things or or talk to people and and learn more because I I really do need to learn more too. There's many gaps in everything, minimum wage, living wage. There there's a lot of gaps and I don't have the answers today and I don't think anybody does.
So councillor McKay.
I think we all have lots to learn, including the people who roll these things out. And I think for me, it's, I would like. Them to take a look. I don't know what the answers are. So I mean, I don't know what the merit of. Organizations that everybody prize into your lives or or gives you chunks of money or or even says, I'll claw that back because you got money from this one. Those things don't make sense to me. So for me, the support is I need, I would really like someone to take all of that. At whatever level of government or both or all and say, how do we make things better? Because I don't think what they, what's happening now is the best solution. So. I'm not sure, I'm happy to learn more, but I'm not sure what our learning would do because I'm sure they're not going to take it from us. So I would like them to learn more about it and say. Perhaps do something differently.
So I throw out to council, what is, what is the wish of council? Obviously, I will do what council votes to do. Would somebody like to suggest a go forward and? If that is a letter, I will be guided by that, but.
So can I just respond and and just get clarity from you, Jody? So are you in favor of sort of writing, proposing a letter to ask the government questions on where you're supposed to to do these gaps? Like, obviously, we're not clear on that, on where to go, but where I just wanted to get your sense on on that.
Yeah, I mean, again, happy to hear people come in and talk to us. That's. Always, but I, at the end of the day, I think we're going to come up with the same questions. So I think saying, we really want government to look at the rollout of. A universal basic income or whatever that looks like and. We support them looking at it, not what to do because I don't think we have the answers to that. So but I would be supportive of saying, please take a look.
Okay.
And councillor Pomer.
I think that. In principle, we all agree that, you know, the a living wage is important and we need to have it. It's clearly out of the town of Woolfield's responsibility. It's federal or provincial. It's a tax issue or. A subsidy issue. It's not really exactly ours. So for us to support that. If we do indeed support it, that's easy. We can say, yes, we support it. The mechanism is way out of our control, how to do it. So I mean, I'm all for it personally. But how it gets done is way beyond us. So the letter could be written today if we are agreement that we support it.
Mayor. I I I would just want clarity on who we address the letter to. And it could mean that it's more than one person because I think. Because there's so many different entities out there that have a role. And I don't think there is at the provincial government level anyway, an overarching person. That because we have so many different departments, for example, that that have different roles. So you know, do we write our. A A MLA. I mean, I don't, I don't know where where this goes, to be honest. I mean, I think we can all. Find the pieces that we want to articulate in the letter. But my concern is, not concern, I I just think we may not, one, one letter might not be enough, I guess is what I'm saying.
Councillor Elliot, drive a way out of this.
We have a choice to make. Do we want to have invite someone to speak to us and offer more information? Or do we just want to look at a letter saying? Please consider this issue because it's important. That's, that's the choice we have in front of us. We have the example of Halifax from last June. We could look at what they sent and who they sent it to. Also PEI, which I think went federally, but.
Could you pull those things together for maybe the March cow and and provide council with that information before? If that, that would be very helpful and what what you mentioned Amherst, what where they are going.
Yeah.
As I say, Mayor Matar had from his legal, you know, he's putting his legal hat on. He had some good points and I can follow up with him. But I I think that would be helpful to inform us and then that we might have a clear direction. And some of the comments that have been made today, I've found very helpful. Would that be okay? So our direction to councillor Elliot. Do we need a motion or can we just give her?
I don't think at this point, it's just direction to come back with more information and we'll add it to the March committee, the whole agenda.
Thank you very much, councillor Elliot, and we will add it to the March agenda and and what we get in advance, we can do. And feel free to reach out to your colleagues. Several people have said they were willing to help, so that would be great. Yes, pulling it together, that that would be, you need a white paper or whatever color paper it's supposed to be. All right. Looking at the time, it is, I can't, it's 10:52. We're going to go for another. Thirty-five minutes and then we're going to go in camera. So we will move to the information report on the Welcome Centre and I'm assuming that is. Director Thomason.
I like that. It's pretty. Yeah. Are you talking to me? Oh, sorry. Yes, I apologize.
Good morning, council. As requested, when we discussed the RFD around moving forward with the Welcome Centre. The request from council is to come back. With some visuals to ensure that we are heading in the direction that council can support. I can say since our last discussion, it's been an incredible pleasure to work with our new director of engineering and public works. To put together a package to share and and showcase with council and. Given the fact that we're going to be doing this internally, it's a, it's a positive step forward. I will. Share with you the information report that you've had a chance to review, hopefully, that speaks to a floor plan. It speaks to key pieces of the development that we've talked about since day one, which includes accessibility, increased access to. Washroom space outside hours of the the visitor information center. It speaks to covered space. It speaks to now supporting the, the splash pad by by way of some changing rooms. And it also speaks to providing staff with space to conduct their, their business. And that's the the floor plan that you've seen in front of us. I to note and based on our director's opinion will. We would use the existing floor plan or foundation of the old visitor information center as a takeoff point in the starting. Position. So the, the site would be very similar to what it is now. Moving forward. Pictures of sort of west end views. You'll notice these windows are a little higher on the the wall than you might typically see, but that is, of course, to provide small space on the inside. To support either technology visuals or or display. Pieces. We move around to the front. There's some stage areas that was added to support. Some of the work that happens in the park for both events and festivals and and captioned an additional cupboard area. Again, from the north facing side overlooking the pond, the the visual clues driving into town. And building off the work that we've done on the the trail hut on the opposite side. And then finally, a view of the southeast corner, which we see in access to one of the, one of the two exterior washroom doors. The, the, the backside changing rooms and and some space to to eliminate the inside of the. The the closed space for the staff. So those, those are images that. I wanted to bring forward and ensure that council is comfortable with the direction that we're taking in discussions with. With the director of engineering public works, we're keen to get the tender out. But in reality, it's his strong suggestion that we wait for a September start to ensure that we don't. Disrupt the season regardless of when we were to start in the spring. The potential to sort of close off the site, including the the use of the splash pad. Has a high potential and we would just feel encouraged to start this after we go through the, the, the final season with the existing building. So that's, that's the information report. Happy to address any questions that you may have, but hopefully we've, we've done that with the presentation.
Councillor Ingham. I think it looks great. I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's going to blend in nicely with the the trailhead. I think the concept looks really good. I probably know this, but I'm going to ask you it again. Are, there's two washrooms, are they both gender neutral and they both accessible?
That it was yes and yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm it. That's all. Thank you.
Councillor Elliot. Yeah, I like, I like the way it looks. Just had a question about the exterior surface. It's going to be brick?
No, that. Turn myself off. No, that hasn't been fully fleshed out. That one, I think she may be showing a cedar shake as an example. I think the intention is to to have some sort of wood natural finish on the outside, not, not brick.
Not brick, okay. I I think the color is important.
Yep.
So I just wondered on that, on that front and I'm, I'm also thinking off the top of my head. That if work starts in September, that maybe Randall House could be useful for. Tourist accommodation information in the, in that month.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Excellent. Good idea. There, councillor Butler.
And I just, I just had a question. I I love the look. I absolutely love it. I spent a lot of time at this place in the summertime, so I'm very excited. Just looking at at the layout of the, the, the entry point to the staff area, there's. There's obviously like a little sink, possibly a fridge in the staff area. In the design, there's no access to the washrooms from any of those areas. You do have to actually leave those areas to get to a washroom. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, whereas currently there is a washroom in the, the main area it is now. So for staff. It's, it's, it's for everyone, everyone included. Like, there's no separate washroom.
There's no separate staff washroom. It would, they would, they would continue to use one of the two public washrooms.
Okay, cool. That was not clear.
No other questions? Thank you. Looks like everybody likes it.
Yep.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Coming to fruition. Third quarter financial update would be. Director McLean. Unless our new chair of audit does it because he did it. I was surprised your report didn't say I missed Jody. He said it verbally. McLean's going to say the same.
We we shed a, we shed a couple tears at the first meeting, just there was. There was a sense of sadness.
It was very good, actually. Truth be known.
Okay. I'm glad we're smiling at the start of this one.
Oh, wait till the end of the day.
The third quarter update, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to go through it. I won't go through it page by page sort of thing, but. The key. At this point in time is we are forecasting a year in deficit. Now, obviously, that work was prepped off of December 31st results. And there'll be things that. Now, obviously, that work was prepped off of December thirty-first results and there'll be things that will change over time. As of yesterday, one of them went in the right direction. De-transfer tax. The month of January was the biggest month of January that we've ever had, which is, we just finished looking at the trend, which was downwards for the last nine months, I think. So that changed. On the other hand, we've had some overtime due to weather events and breakages of pipes. So how that's going to follow to the end of the year is yet to be seen. But I've added a couple notes in terms of, we don't need a motion out of this particular report. There's a separate R F D coming on, on the transfer from reserves. So I just wanted to highlight basically this page here. So we, we've got our actuals to December thirty-first, but the more important set of numbers to me is our year-end forecast. So we are forecasting a deficit of a hundred and one thousand dollars. It could be ninety-five, you know, it, it's a margin of error on this, but we knew earlier on that we were relatively tight to budget. It now looks to be barring another good de-transfer month sort of thing, or we have weather events that reduce salt use the rest of the year. You know, we'll probably end the year with a deficit. It kind of informs our budget discussions, because if you get into the minutia of each page of numbers, there's areas where we have gone over budget. And those are areas that we'll have to look at is, as the budget set, how we move forward into the next year and how, how we follow that, that outline. So that's the key. To me, you, you can see the revenue variance, we're expected to have over two hundred thousand dollars more in revenues. All things being equal, that should lead to a surplus. The expenditures are expected to be over budget. And that's despite the fact that we didn't spend a number of the items that we planned to use reserves for. So it's that spending side that we need to be cognizant of as we move through the budget cycle. So for me, this year is one of those ones that informs the budget a little bit more than perhaps some other years. I do like the fact that de-transfer tax had a, had a bigger month than expected. I actually think it's in the probably top five or 10 of any month, including summer all time. So it's, it's a bizarre kind of up and down year we've had on that. And I'd open it up to any questions if people have gone through. We had a long discussion at Audit and the only other item there is the large receivable and I'll answer questions if, if there are any on that. Is that fair?
Sure. Are there any questions? Counselor Palmetier.
How much of your over budget is just from plain inflation versus over under budgeting or in over expenditure? I mean, whatever word you want to use.
I wouldn't tag it to inflation. I would tag it to choices that were made through the year in terms of spending that occurred. There may be a few winter maintenance type things that we're hitting right now that are not necessarily inflation, but situational. Saturday was probably a unique day. There was a lot of crew hours that went into maintaining streets and/or pipes. So I wouldn't call it necessarily inflation. So I don't think it was the budget estimates that were off to the heart of your question. Is that fair?
Any other questions? Right, thank you. And I think you're probably staying here for the next two, transfer to, from operating reserves.
See whether Laura and I do. Laura, you may be able to do this faster than I. Down here? That's what I thought. Thank you. I was trying to do that, but I was functionally not pulling it off. Probably a little too far there. Thinking people that tuned in to watch are wondering who the two voices are talking to and whether to get this up. Sorry, we're back in business. So the R F D for transfer from operating reserves ties in and it makes reference to the info report that we were just touching on in terms of the year-end deficit. The keys at this stage are the recommendation is to transfer an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars from operating reserves to cover some of the cost overages that relate to items that weren't planned, occurred through the year. Special election's an easy one to, to, to highlight there. Nobody put that in the budget. Nobody expected it. So the hundred and thirty is, it would more than cover what we're seeing per year in deficit. If it creates a bit of a surplus, all those dollars go back to the operating reserves anyway by legislation. So if we move a little bit too much, it's not an issue. What this will become is, as I do the year-end procedures and that carries us through April and May, if it looks like only fifty thousand needs to be transferred, we can just do fifty at this time, but this is kind of an upset limit. I don't think we'll need more than that. And that will put us back into a surplus position by the end of the year. Functionally, that becomes important because municipalities, if we incur a deficit, it becomes your kind of first line item in your next year's budget. Practically speaking, we set budgets before we know our final number. But if you bring it into the budget, the shortfall we're already looking at would be bigger. And the way most municipalities deal with that is operating reserves. It's part of the reason we have them. So this functionally gets you ahead of the game. We deal with it. If it's a little bit too much of a transfer, it goes back into operating reserves anyways. So it's a bit of an accounting exercise to balance the books for the year end in a manner that keeps our indicators clean and, and if we transfer too much, it goes back to the, the same bucket we just pulled it from. And that's the easiest way I can think to explain it, but I'm more than willing to answer questions that needed.
So we have a motion. First, are there any questions? And then I'll ask Counselor Butler to move that motion.
Go ahead.
So this is, it is just an in and an out just to get ahead of it, not put it in. And it's for transparency more than anything. We spent the money differently than we did, had originally intended. So this just sort of puts it into.
Yeah, and I guess it's important to note that it is, it's more coincident than intentional is this will bring your total transfer from reserves back to what you originally had in the budget as a total dollar amount. To your, to your comments, it's for a different purpose and that is very much about accountability and transparency is as, as a finance staff, I can't just move it out of reserves because you said it has to attach to the items that you said it was to be attached to. So very much that, it's for a different purpose. But in this case, it's no more than you originally planned to take out.
Thank you. And the hundred and one thousand, so that does, a hundred and thirty thousand does then help with our cash flow, or maybe this should have been last question. Our F D or this one. So this helps our cash flow, but are we still in a cash flow problem with our large receivable?
Slightly different topics. This, this helps in terms of the use of the reserves. I wouldn't say that we're in a cash flow problem right now. We talked a little bit about that at Audit in terms of we have sufficient cash in hand to cover where we're at. We had a number of items that we were waiting for and we've, we've got a few of them in that were our grant lieu related to Acadia was, it seems to be February is the month now, whereas a decade ago it was November. So you know, that's near a million dollars. That's coming. We're not in the cash flow crunch, but neither should this one property owner owe the dollar amount that's owed. So we're trying to pursue that. It's, we're not in a crunch yet, but I suggest over six hundred thousand dollars is an issue I have to resolve. Is that fair?
Well, I, I just had some confusion around that six hundred thousand and how, how that happens, but that's not part of this discussion, I think.
Suffice to say, there've been no payments on the property taxes for a year and a half for multiple buildings. And that's the easiest way I could put it.
All right, Counselor Butler, would you like to move this motion please?
Certainly. I move that Committee of the Whole forward the following motion to Council. The Council approve an additional transfer from operating reserves of a hundred and thirty thousand to operating fund covering budget shortfall related to capital project overages, special election costs and early costs for the Park's master planning project.
Thank you. On a second, please. Do you want to put your light on, please?
Seconded.
Thank you, Counselor Palmetier. Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, that's passed. And that guarantee, would that be you as well?
I was going to get up, but then I realized what was next. It's a little easier, this report, it's more or less a standing item that we deal with every year. For those that have been on Council, for our newest member, we provide debt guarantees for valley waste when they have to go out and borrow for their capital program. So the item in front of you is simply to put in place the guarantee that will relate to their participation in the upcoming spring adventure issue. So it relates to thing, councils that participate in valley waste have already approved the budget. They've gone through part of their capital program. They will go to the spring adventure and this simply provides the formal guarantee related to that. And if there's any questions.
There any questions? Counselor McKay is the alternate on the M C. Probably falls to you.
Sorry. That's okay. I would move that Committee of the Whole forward the following motion to Council for decision. The Council guarantees a share of the Valley Waste Resource Management Authority's temporary borrowing resolution capital for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three in the amount of a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars with Wolf's share being eight point eight five percent of fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars as per attached partner guarantee resolution form.
I'll second.
Counselor Butler, you can second that. Sorry, Counselor Elliott, are there any questions? Any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you. That's passed. We're going to, because this afternoon's budget, I'm going to skip over E and F and hope we can get through the external committee reports and then we will break for in camera. Counselor Butler, any additional things on King's point to point that you wish to add?
Counselor Ingham was nice enough to attend that meeting for me and it was a very fantastic report. Once I sent her all the information, because her email address was not part of it, but thank you, Counselor.
Nothing to report further. Thank you, Counselor Butler. And questions. I, I do know that, I mean, I, I did talk to Counselor Butler about the exact amount that the federal government came up with, I think it was over four hundred between the provincial and the federal government in support of some two new vehicles and it covers it. So that's, that's good news. But yes.
Think it's Counselor McKay, the W B T C, yes?
I submitted.
I submitted. The I M S A for valley waste and King's transit. I have nothing else to ask. Is there any questions? Nor of the Recreation Task Force, other than the, as submitted, we are meeting this Thursday morning and I'm hopeful that there will be some public information that comes out after that meeting. We have a tiny bit of time, so we are going to also try to get new business, which in this case, we don't discuss it. Deputy Mayor, do you want to speak about your request for an agenda item and then Council will decide whether we want to move that on to a future agenda?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Donovan. The reason I, I put this request in, it really stems from a presentation that was made to P A C in the fall by an individual, a homeowner who is in R one and wanted the option of putting in a an apartment, a small apartment for support as she's and her husband are aging in their home. And it was a very specific request that this be an option available to individuals while the homeowner lives in the home. So this is not about turning R one into R two. It is about exploring rental options for individuals who live in R one, own their property and want the possibility of possibly having some extra income so that it would allow them to live in their home as, as they're aging. So that's where the request came from and I've since spoken to other people who feel that there, there could be more flexibility within our current parameters for R one. But there are also options that maybe people that are there already, that maybe people don't understand they have. For example, if somebody lives in R one and they go away for a year, say on sabbatical or whatever, they do have the option to rent their home out while they're gone. But a lot of people may not know that that, that exists. And, and so I, I think there are, that this is a timely request, given what we are looking at in terms of housing generally. And so what I, my request is that we review what the existing policy is and to do that with a view to possibly expanding that option that would satisfy the request that we P A C received in the fall.
Just before I open it to question, well, no, I, my question was going to be, should this come back to Council or P A C if it's, if it is, but I will hold that until after.
Okay. And if I could just say, I did make a mistake on that form I filled in and I put in in camera and it's not, that's incorrect. And so I just got a little triggering problem there.
So our discussion is, do we support moving this on to discussion at a future council or potentially P A C, whichever is appropriate? So that's where our focus is now, not to. Counselor Elliott?
I just wanted to say that I support this idea because I, I believe that owner occupied increased density is something that we should consider. I'd be very interested in getting our Director's opinion on this if we do discuss it, but I think it's, it's a, a needed talk.
Other members of Council, Counselor McKay?
Yeah, in, I got, in the exact example that you gave, I would support that obviously, but it's a big topic. I think there's lots of big topics coming up with height and R one and all of the other things we thought through the last time, but I, I would think that that would be a P A C discussion first and then come back to us for recommendations. It's a big one.
Counselor Palmetier.
I'd agree with the Counselor McKay. It's definitely P A C or the P A C should make a recommendation to us. That's, that's the bullet book.
Counselor Ingham? I agree. I think it should go to P A C first and, and for discussion.
So I think we are looking for staff direction to come back with a report to P A C. Am I, would that be appropriate?
You can refer this to the.
Just refer this. Do we need a motion?
Yes, I would do a motion.
Okay. I move that we ask staff to work with P A C or how, how is it that this item be
Be referred to the planning advisory.
Planning Advisory Committee for discussion and consideration.
Thank you. A seconder? Doesn't matter. I think I heard Counselor Palmetier's voice first. Thank you. Is there any other discussion on that motion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. All right. So that will be forwarded to P A C for discussion. We're a tiny bit early, but I think rather than get into anything else, if I could have a motion to go in camera, please. Counselor Butler, Counselor Elliott, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. We are now in camera. We will probably be in camera for the next hour and a half anyway. So those people who are not involved. Go.